Welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, April 7th, 2025, and this meeting is called to order. Tonight's invocation is by Cantor Lou Price of the First Hebrew Congregation.
I didn't think I was that special to warn all these cameras, but I feel like I should sing or do some number. Thank you again for inviting me. "In the sanctuary of dialogue, let respect be the cornerstone upon which our interactions are built. Let our words be guided by a deep appreciation for the diverse perspectives that enrich our discussions. Like the roots of a tree that interweave to form a sturdy foundation, so do our respectful interactions create a strong base for fruitful conversations. With each exchange, let us honor the uniqueness of every individual. And through this invocation of respect, let us foster an environment where every voice is heard and valued."
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please? Megan?
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hasley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Annie Brown.
Here.
I move to excuse Councilwoman Wilkins for personal reasons.
Second.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Latisha Wilkins is excused for personal reasons. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? And do you want to limit the public comment to three minutes?
I wouldn't move to approve the agenda, but in amended form, moving Agenda Item 14 up to Agenda Item 10, and then renumbering 10 to 13, such that the lifeguards would be addressed first.
Okay, so the lifeguards become number 10?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And then number 10 becomes 14?
No. Oh, I thought number 10 would become 11. They would just slide down.
Oh, okay, got it.
Slide down one.
Okay, thank you.
So that the person doing the pontific...
Yep.
Wouldn't have to wait till the end.
Okay, I think I have that. Okay, and there was, I think there was a second?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if anybody wants to limit comments. There's not a lot of people in the audience at other situations where we have, so I will defer to other people.
Okay. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved with the one change of changing the spot of the lifeguard discussion. Okay, there's no community update, so we're moving on to public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to five minutes.
Hello? How are you guys? Thanks for having me. My name is Samantha Kester, born and raised in South Haven, current Covert resident. I am otherwise known as Coach Sam to many of our local littles. I teach the elementary swim program here in South Haven. I am here to talk about lifeguards. As many of you know, I am very pro-lifeguard, and I am a lifeguard advocate. I'm here to say that, as the years have gone on, the naysayers have cited all kinds of improbabilities as to why South Haven does not or cannot have a lifeguard program. I hope each of you can accept this proposal with a newfound understanding and faith that we absolutely can do this. The perfect lifeguard candidates are here. They're in our community and our neighboring communities. They are the lovers of nature and all things aquatics, the people who take pride in sharing their love and knowledge of Lake Michigan, and they're passionately eager to share not only its beauty but also her more dangerous qualities. Since the beginning of 2025, I have personally already certified 27 American Red Cross lifeguards in our area. You will see them this summer all over southwest Michigan, at our summer camps, your triathlons, Sleepy Hollow, Lake Arvesta, and many more. With that being said, I have great confidence that with your support, we can find those qualified individuals to perform the required tasks of being a lifeguard, and we're talking about 14 weeks. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa McDonald, and I reside in Chesterfield, Michigan. I'm so pleased that you guys have received and reviewed the plan that the USLA has written up for you, and I'm confident that once Mr. Bruce does his presentation, that you will find it almost impossible not to vote for lifeguards. South Haven is a beautiful town. It is no wonder that hundreds and thousands of people flock here every summer. As you've read in their report, your chance of drowning on a beach protected by a lifeguard is one in 18 million. When I first heard that fact, I thought I misheard, and I had to Google it, but it is. If they are on a properly certified lifeguard beach, one in 18 million. Further in their report, they say that with those statistics, South Haven probably would go 50 years or more without a drowning. Knowing that, those statistics, and knowing that Lake Michigan at times can be very dangerous and sadly deadly, it is time for South Haven to stand up and protect and respect the people that come to this town and keep your economy going every year, year after year. Lifeguards should not be seen as a luxury or a liability, but rather a responsibility and a priority. Lifeguards should definitely be on top of your priority list moving forward. I have spoken to the experts in the lifeguard field. They have assured me that you can get a program done for this summer. And as a reminder, myself and many of the followers on my website, Save Lives Higher Lifeguards, have committed to sponsor lifeguards getting their certifications, and there are many other people that want to join in and do what they can. We all want to make lifeguards in South Haven a reality. I urge you not to waste another minute getting the lifeguard program going. So please, no more excuses or delays, no more meetings, make meetings, or schedule more meetings to discuss something that has been brought to your attention for over a decade. Please, for Emily and Cory, and all the Emilys and Corys to come, please vote yes on reinstating lifeguards to your beaches. Vote yes to protect lives of those who live here and those that visit here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. The Agenda Item reads, "The city council will be asked to receive the report from the United States Lifeguard Association and consider next steps." I hope the next step will be to take a vote. This needs to get going tonight. We cannot keep dragging this on. I believe all your questions should be answered by now. The budget was approved by all of you for this '25 fiscal year. $700,000 was approved for lifeguards. The money issue should not be a problem. USLA has already answered the liability concerns and other concerns within their report. I think, I hope, you all read it, and that there can be a robust discussion tonight, and we can vote to get going so that we have lifeguards on the beaches in 2025. This can't go for another year. There really is nothing, no more information you all need to make this decision, and to drag it on for another year would be ridiculous. So, thank you for your time in doing this, and vote.
Thank you.
Jack Fitzer, 24 and 1/2 Grand Boulevard. Item 13, what is now probably Item 14 concerning the city council asked to approve Community Recreation Director Agreement with South Haven Public Schools. I would like to express a strong opposition to this concept of a recreation program for our community. When our mayor ran for office, she outlined in front of a lot of people at the senior center, her program for recreation for the community. At the time, we asked a very pointed question about that exact idea, that the Recreation Department would be run by the schools. And we were, the answer to the question was nebulous, didn't expect it to come up. Here we are. What you're doing is abdicating, if you accept this, you're abdicating the responsibility of having the city run a recreation program. The benefits of a recreation program are remarkable, and I've had years and years of experience in that business. I'd like to know the model of success that you studied in order to determine that our Recreation Department should be run by the school system. And my question, second question then, it would be, who would be the supervisor of the Recreation Director? Would it be the Athletic Director? The job description that you have already approved evidently for a part-time employee includes so many unusual things for a Recreation Director that I have to laugh. I'm curious if you approached the National Association of Parks and Recreation, or what they call now Recreation and Parks, to get any help in developing that particular job description. I've read it a while ago and talked to Scott about it, and expressed my concern about that particular description. Everything from fundraising to running the Little League, basically, the whole thing was just really out of line for that professional approach to recreation. And I'm just hoping that you reconsider the idea of the schools being involved in this aspect of our lives here. So much good can come out of it. You have a commission that is a Parks and Recreation Commission. You have staff that could oversee this person. I was surprised to see it was a part-time job. The list of responsibilities for this person are such that it would take 80 hours a week to accomplish the chores that you've given him or her. I also asked that in previous discussion about this, that we don't hire someone who isn't a professional in the business. And in reading the notes, there's a lot of part-time employees at the school district that could end up being the Parks and Recreation Director. That, to me, is just absolutely... It just isn't the proper way to run a business and run this, and that's what it is. Parks and Recreation is a business.
Do you have one minute?
And I'm through. You get the idea. This is not the way to approach this for any community. So I'm looking forward to finding out who the model was that successfully has run a Parks and Recreation Department through the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Grace Borgfield at 302 Michigan Avenue. Let me begin, this is on the Parks and Recreation Director, and begin by saying that I think our parks here are just lovely. I use them quite often, take my grandkids there, we all use them quite often, so. But I also want to say that I'm glad to see that the city realizes with this size of a town that a partnership with South Haven Public Schools just might work. What I'm concerned about is why the millage was requested in the first place. When the millage was brought to the council last year, I remember individuals standing here, just as I am tonight, excuse me, stating that South Haven was behind on its parks. So I took a minute and reviewed the city of St. Joe to south and the city of Howland north of us, and went line by line of each city amenities that the parks provides to its residents and visitors. I found that the city of South Haven was missing a dog park, a Gaga ball pit, a cross-country skiing, which I think they can do at the trail, I think they can do that. We're missing horseshoes and a windmill island. And the other thing that we're missing is on those two cities, Parks and Recreation, there's more programming provided at downlifts, and you can, it's a little more itemized than the city of South Haven. So here's my first question. With the new person providing, will the new person provide updated calendars and events opportunities for the public, or will the information be needed to be accessed at South Haven Public School site? Example, ASO signups, Little League, football, whatever the person has planned for after-school events or for seniors when the senior center is closed. What access will the public have to amenities at the school? I spent some time reviewing the long-term planning for the parks, and it's a very aggressive long-term plan, which is good, but if we use the funds generated by the new millage, will we still be able to maintain the parks at an adequate level? My concern there will be additional millage requests for maintaining existing new projects on the horizon. There are cities that have paid dog parks that are very successful, and even there are free parks available to residents and visitors. I know there has been an increase in pickleball, but there's the senior center, the public schools, there's the pay-for-play option in town. My guess at that not be enough. So can there be a fee if we have new pickleball courts? And that we can have teams play for revenue? Or an adult recreation soccer, which has a pay-for-play as many cities municipalities have? Can the new CRD come up with ways to generate additional revenue for the parks? In closing, please, please make sure that we can maintain the current levels that we have before we go back to the voters for more money to cover the projects that we cover in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lisa Croupier is 561 Indiana Avenue. I'm also speaking on item, which is now Agenda Item 14, the Community Recreation Director. I wasn't sure if I was going to have three minutes. I assumed I was only going to have three minutes tonight, so I planned my comments accordingly. But, so I had not included a lot of what Mr. Fitzer said. That job description is scary, long, and a lot of responsibility for a part-time person. And as Mr. Fitzer pointed out, and also Grace, can't remember Grace's last name, but Grace said that it reminded me of when I grew up in, I grew up in the city of Dearborn, which had a very robust parks program. And it was a department, it was a Parks and Rec department, and the schools were a separate entity. But from my comments here, so the 90,000 annually to the Community Recreation Director, which is taken directly from the Agenda Packet, with future period amounts increasing as appropriate, and mutually agreed upon by parties involved to cover the wages, benefits, and other recreational expenditures budgeted. I do not, I, as much as I read through the Agenda Packet, I could not figure out what the expenditures included. I had a conversation with a community member, and are the expenditures for, it was referred to, in fact, let me just continue. So is this $90,000 a budget for this position? Is it a budget, or is it the salary of this individual? And again, 29 hours a week, part-time, is expecting an awful lot. Please clarify the other recreational expenditures. Does this include recreational equipment, or just the supplies to execute this position? This is resident taxpayer money, and we deserve to know the details. So I, I know there are equipment needed to start up a position, it sounded like the person needed to have knowledge in operating a fax machine, a printer, a computer, and that kind of thing. I'm not sure the price tag on that, but then I also looked at the Parks Commission Agenda, and it's as vague in that agenda as well. So I think it needs to be clarified, what exactly this $90,000, what is the salary of the individual, I guess, is, you know? And how is that pulled out of there? And what is the extra money? Is it used for equipment to do their job? You know, recreational equipment or office equipment? Then Agenda Item Number 16, which is now Number 16, about the prosecuting attorney I looked at the city charter, and the city charter does say that the council may designate any attorney or law firm to have responsibilities for particular legal matters, and shall designate an attorney or law firm to prosecute ordinance violations. Such legal counsel shall advise officer or department head of the city as to the officers or department's heads' official duties, or as to matters concerning the city as a whole, but such legal counsel shall serve at the will and be responsible solely to the council. So I sent an email today with this information. From, and I understand it's Bloom, the current attorney we have, and then another firm that we're looking at. And I don't know if it's advantageous to have the same firm do both responsibilities, or if it would be advisable to have two different law firms handling the two different areas. The thing that I do, I do want to clarify, is that such legal counsels shall serve at the will and be responsible solely...
Your time's up. Thank you.
To the council. Thank you.
Hello. I am Rosemary Fitzer. I live at 24 and 1/2 Grand Boulevard. I also want to talk about the Parks and Recreation Group and the projection, and I think that many, many citizens here are dismayed at the shift, what we see, from when we were being asked by a lot of people in the community to promote this, to go out and ask people to vote for the millage, let's start a Parks and Rec program, a real Parks and Rec program. I don't think we're getting what we thought we were going to get, and I don't know where the shift came. I will talk a little bit about pickleball, because I just want to point out that there is always a perception when it comes up in a group of non-seniors that it's only seniors that care about pickleball, and we're really annoying, but it is not. And pickleball, if you don't understand it, is just one of the fastest-growing things in the country. I can go anywhere in this country, I can get on an app, and I can find seven parks, public, free parks for people, people of all ages. If you go over to our high school, that's a second misconception I just want to point out. We do have a senior center. Do we have courts at the high school? The only people that can play at the senior center are seniors. That's a big limit. The only time you can play outside at the high school is when the courts are available. They are not really true courts. There are four pickleball courts squished into the same space that takes up by tennis, two tennis courts. They've got lines, they're very confusing, it is not true tennis. You go out there in the summer, that is at least available to anybody, any age. You go out there in the summer, there'll be anywhere from 30 to 50 people sitting around trying to play on six courts. Don't let anybody fool you that we have adequate pickleball courts. And don't let anybody leave you with the misconception that nobody cares but the seniors. People of all ages are coming here. People, I have friends that go, when they go on vacation, they're looking, where can I play pickleball? And they're 35 and 40 years old. So the other thing is that we did understand we were going to build a Parks and Recreation unit. We were not going to take staff out of the high school and ask them to be Parks and Recreation people when they weren't trained for that. And I don't know why we're doing that. I don't know why we can't have a separate, a separate program that is run by somebody who does, that is their job, and they have some experience in it. And because there's so many things, when I read the list of things you want this part-time, already-high-school person to do, I don't know, you expect them to be up all night or something? I cannot imagine how anybody could do any of that. So I just think that we need to look again before you make any kind of final vote at what, if you really want a Parks and Recreation program that works for all the people and includes all kinds of things, like youth programs and that, we're not getting it here. We're just not getting it here. And again, we had a lot of people that supported this millage. The millage is not doing what we thought it was going to do at all. So I hope you reconsider that, and you don't vote on this proposed solution to Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. We are at the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through H?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through H.
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Arnold?
Yes.
Hasley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to consider approval of the following special event applications. A, Special Event 2025-17, Al Van's Fury 5K 2025, to be held on Saturday, June 28th, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at Kids Corner. B, Special Event 2025-18, Night of Worship and Baptism, to be held on Saturday, August 24th, 2025, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. on the North Beach. C, Special Event 2025-19, Festival of Cars and Cruisin' for Kylie 2025, to be held on Saturday, June 7th, 2025, from 5:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. in the Huron Street Parking Lot and Pavilion. D, Special Event 2025-20, Via Crucis, The Way of the Cross, to be held on Friday, April 18th, 2025, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Superior Street, St. Joseph's Street, South Haven Street, and Monroe Boulevard. And E, Special Event 2025-21, South Haven Dinghy Run, to be held at the Huron Pavilion following the Farm Market on Saturday, July 19th, 2025, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the 19th Annual Dinghy Run. Is there a motion to approve the special events?
I would move to approve Special Event 2025-17, Al Van Fury 5K 2025, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-18, Night of Worship and Baptism, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-19, Festival of Cars, Cruisin' for Kylie 2025, as read by the mayor. Special Event 2025-20, Via Crucis, The Way of the Cross, as read by the mayor. And finally, Special Event 2025-21, South Haven Dinghy Run, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have just a quick question. On the Festival of Cars, Cruisin' for Kylie, I know there's been issues in the past with moving of the Farm Market. Is that, we got a good place for the Farm Market to end up?
We do. Last year, we moved things around, so the Farm Market is now in the Dyckman Park area. So I think that worked out very well last year for Cruisin', Cruisin' for Kylie, as well as, I think, one or two days with the Farm, with Blueberry Festival. That seemed to go very well, instead of having them moving across the street next to Ace Hardware. So we have them moving into Dyckman Park and have been trying to kind of get those issues ironed out. It's those one-time events where you're trying to get all the unknowns kind of ironed out, but I've heard good things about, from the vendors, about moving into the park for that one day.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes and the special events have been approved. Next, the City Council will be asked to receive the report from the United States Lifeguard Association and consider next steps. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. I do know that we have Chris Brewster here. And Chris, if you have your jump drive, I can get that on here. I do want to make sure that I kind of clear up something that was brought up on the US LA Lifeguard Report in that they do have a section called civil liability. However, I do want to underscore that that is not our understanding of civil liability, is that the city is still an attractive litigant and that there is, there is no gross, or there is no blanket immunity there. I mean, clearly, we have some lawsuits going on right now where the city had no employees on the beach, but I do think it, it does need to be stated that there is civil liability that is faced by cities, municipalities in this arena. And I think that unfortunately, I think the, the report kind of says they weren't going to go into it, but our understanding is that the holdings that they cite are not, not correct.
Thank you.
Here's this. Just can show you like the colors there?
Yeah.
Yep, it should be pointed right there. Nope.
Can I put this over the podium or something?
Um, how about I show it this way?
Okay.
Okay. And then I'll just, I'll hit the forward button for you?
Um.
Okay.
See what happens.
All right. This is Chris Brewster, by the way. Any of you may know, talk to him. So Chris was a part of the team of four that came together and put together Lifeguard Report.
Thanks, Kate. Great to be back here. I, up until February, I was unaware that perch was a delicacy. And now, now I know, and I've had a lot, and it's been great. Also had a great time to meet a whole bunch of, all of you individually, but also a lot of people in town. And it's been a, just a wonderful experience. People on both sides of this issue have been really respectful and given some good input. And so it's really been nice, I have to say, especially going into some of the areas in town where they knew what we were up to and came up and talked to us and so forth. So thank you for inviting us here. It's been a real experience, and I hope that we can add something to safety here in town. So, is that working? Oh, we only have one.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That's not working. Okay, good. So I'll look at this one then. So Ms. McDonald, I kind of stole my thunder here, which is fine. But what we're proposing is something that would reduce the number of drowning fatalities in South Haven down to one every 50-plus years in guarded areas.
Okay.
So where does that come from? There's nationwide statistics that come in from Lifeguard Agencies all across the U.S. about their estimated attendance and then the number of drowning fatalities in guarded areas. So where that 50-plus years comes from is simply taking the demonstrated attendance at your beaches, South and North Beach, and using exactly that same multiplier. And that's, that's the attendance, but we'll get into those figures a little bit further. Thanks. So what you asked from us was to develop recommendations and options for staffing levels, right, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and at all seven beaches or at just South Beach and North Beach. And we've combined those into a single recommendation. Go ahead. This is, these are my partners in crime here. Andy Brody on the left is the president of the Great Lakes Region, and he's right over here to back me up. Merrill Riley is a retired Lifeguard Captain from Los Angeles County who ran their training program. And Jim McCready, chief of Hallandale Beach, but also somebody I've worked with on projects like this all around the U.S., in Costa Rica, in Puerto Rico, and a number of other areas. And I just want to emphasize that is not our usual beach attire there. So yes, while we were here, Kate was kind enough to give me a list of stakeholders on all sides of the issue. And we reached out to every single one and invited everyone to meet with us. And I'm happy to say that I would say probably 95% of the people we were able to meet with when we were here, or in some cases, people were in Hawaii and we had to Zoom with them. So South Haven once offered a very effective Lifeguard Program. And we had the opportunity to meet with people who ran that program and who managed that program. It was, it sounds, from everything we've heard, like it worked really quite well. And it appears to us, but we weren't able to go back into the archives all the way, that South Haven guarded its beaches at least from the '20s or something like that until 2001. Then, as you know, in 2001, Lifeguard services were ended. And since that time, you've had 12 drowning fatalities and a whole bunch of other close calls that happily ended better. So when the Lifeguard Program was ended, there was no specific plan laid out by the City Council at that time about, well, what do we do if somebody gets in trouble in the water? And what that effectively did was push the issue over to Shays to be the people in charge when that happened, when, when there was an emergency. And so I just want to take you through, you know, what does that really mean in practice? Well, first of all, somebody on the beach has got to recognize that someone's in distress in the water. Could be a citizen, could be a police officer, could be anybody. But they have to observe it, and those people are not sitting there waiting to see if somebody gets in trouble. I mean, that's not their job. So, and people in the water don't always yell for help. So somebody's got to observe the person in distress, call 911, obviously hope that the call goes through, await for the operator to answer the call, and sometimes dispatch centers get backed up. The operator has to screen the call, obviously, ultimately dispatch the call. And Shays Chief advises that their estimated typical response time after those other things have happened is three to four minutes. Now, a typical response time, and I worked in a fire department for a very long time, means that some days it might be two minutes, and other days it might be 12 or 15, depending on if they're engaged in something else. And then when they respond down here, there's not people who are specifically trained as rescue swimmers. Rather, there are firefighters who are trained with, to go into the water under certain circumstances. And that includes wearing a life jacket, being tethered, and in some cases, putting on a dry suit before they go in. And then there's a second firefighter who holds on to the line. But Shays makes it very clear in their policy that if the firefighter is not willing to go in, they may not be ordered to go in the water. So I guess what the overall takeaway from this is, you have inherent delays in this process that may be five minutes, and they may be 15 or 20 minutes. Drowning's happened very quickly, and you don't even in the end have an absolute assurance that somebody's going to be able to go in the water and make the rescue. All right. So we wanted to get an idea of daily attendance because when you asked us how many lifeguards would be needed to make sure it's adequately safe, I mean, part of the question is obviously, how many people are on the beach? So the Convention and Visitors Bureau were kind enough, Kate put us in touch, to give us mobile phone data to which we applied a, as you see on the bottom, 150% factor, taking into account the fact that if somebody doesn't have a mobile phone, that's an adult, they wouldn't be counted. And then kids and teens are not allowed to be in the data, I guess. So that's, these are some raw estimations. And obviously, you know, if it's raining, there's probably not a lot of people on the beach. And if it's sunny, there's more. But it gives you just a general idea of numbers out there. So what are the hotspots here in South Haven? The hotspots are South Beach, definitely the hotter of the hotspots in terms of the number of incidents that have happened there. And then North Beach, secondarily, very little from what we've heard at the beach accesses to the north in terms of serious incidents. All right. So there's an enterprise fund. When, when the Council in 1992 decided to approve a concept about paid parking, their primary reason was to pay for lifeguards and police, and then a secondary reason was to make beach improvements. And here's what the income and expenses on average over the last couple of full years of income and expense. And keep in mind that the way the enterprise fund works, and I had an enterprise fund when I was a Lifeguard Chief in San Diego for a junior Lifeguard Program, is that you identify a project that generates income, and then you account for that income and expense in a, in a separate line account. And that's what's happening here. And so your income from primarily parking, but also concessions and citations, are all going back to take care of beach expenses. And options, yeah. When we sat down originally with staff, they pointed out that there are a number of options that exist to enhance that revenue through, for example, charging for parking on an hourly basis instead of a daily basis that would encourage turnover, and also obviously increasing parking fees. So I appreciate what Kate had to say about civil liability. And I think what we said in the report was that you should not rely on our advice regarding civil liability. But we're going to give you some anyway. First of all, liability requires provable damages. If there is no drowning, there is no lawsuit over a drowning that didn't occur. So I think you can expect reasonably that if the number of drowning deaths go down, you're going to have less civil liability issues. Yep, Michigan government agencies are generally immune from cases of errors on the part of employees, except for gross negligence and proximate cause of that negligence. So this is what the Michigan Supreme Court said. Is my time up? This is what the Michigan, this is what the Michigan report said about that, and I'll just leave it to you to read that. So what are methods to prevent drownings? And before we get into the Lifeguard piece of this, what are, what are, in the big picture, can you do to have less drownings? Learn to swim programs in the community. I mean, that obviously addresses your own kids. Junior Lifeguard programs are fantastic. They are typically self-funded and really get kids in a community oriented toward the hazards there and how to deal with the hazards. Off-site education, well, you do quite a bit of this. Website, putting stuff in hotel rooms, possibly in short-term vacation rentals. There is a wide variety of ways to get at that off-site education. Then onsite passive education of signs and flags. And you guys have signs out there, and you have flags out there. Just point out that the one up here on the right is the one that was created by the National Oceanic Administration and the United States Lifesaving Association, and it's been out there for about 20 years. So that's the standard approach. You have some variation, I guess. And then onsite active, think of your South Haven ambassadors, for example, going out and talking to people individually. But inevitably, some don't see the signs. Some see them and don't follow them. And of course, signs and flags and websites don't rescue people in distress. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about flags because it's such a big, highly-used method here. So flags are regulated, and I don't mean legally regulated, but the international standard for, for flags comes from the International Lifesaving Federation. And here's what they say. Flags are only to be used on beaches where lifesavers qualified to ILS standards are on duty. Flags are not an acceptable substitute for properly-trained and equipped rescuers, but a tool's for there, that is, the lifeguard's use. So that's the international standard when it applies to flags. And also, the international standard involves a yellow, red, and double-red flag, no green flag. And why is that? Because there was a lot of discussion, and I was the Lifesaving Commissioner for the International Lifesaving Federation at the time that we developed these standards. There was a real concern by the, for the idea that the water's never safe. It's always possible that somebody can drown regardless of what the conditions are. So putting up green has the potential to give people the wrong message. Okay, so lifeguards. Now we're getting to the Hawaii example here. So this is not a typical wave at South Haven to my knowledge, but this is an actual wave on the north shore of Oahu. And I just want to talk about what's going on here and what the point of this picture is, because it's an actual picture of a lifeguard out there talking to a beachgoer. What the lifeguard is saying, and I didn't interview him, but I'm, I feel confident in what he's saying is, ma'am, this is probably not a great day to go swimming. Now, this is an extreme example, but the point is that a major part of what lifeguards do out there on the beach is to talk to people about what the conditions are and give them advice. The point is, lifeguards are not there to wait on the stand until somebody gets in trouble and go out and make the rescue. Their job is to prevent the rescue from needing to happen in the first place. So the best prevention strategy is lifeguards, and you've seen the data on that. You've seen this stat, and so I won't read through it again. Obviously, they have to be adequately trained, equipped, and staffed to be effective. And you've got a lot of details in that report. I'm not going to go through all of them, so. So I just want to emphasize all of the different things that you can expect out of lifeguards if they're on your beaches. Onsite direct prevention, and that's what I was talking about before. The US LA Statistics indicated that a lifeguard takes way more than, around 100 preventive acts, but way more preventive actions than any rescues that ever occur. So that's the 100 to 1, 100 preventive acts to every rescue that takes place. Their job is to scurry around the beach and talk to people and say, hey, don't swim here, swim there. Your peers are a perfect example of what a lifeguard would be expected to do is go up and say, hey, move down a little way because this is a particularly hazardous place. Obviously, to make rescues. Medical aids, that's a routine part of what lifeguards do, and many of those medical aids don't involve drowning. It's just somebody who got hurt on the beach and they can take care of them. Code enforcement is the, a very normal role of lifeguards throughout the country, and they're empowered at various levels depending on what agency. Obviously, lost and found people, which I would also, I would emphasize is 99% kids, and moms getting separated and dads. And then just being local ambassadors for the community. So what do lifeguards need to be effective? They need backup at all times. It's not good, it's not safe to have a lifeguard on the beach by themselves. They need at least one more lifeguard to back them up if something happens or if they get into trouble. They need regular breaks. You know, as wonderful it is, as it is to be paid to sit out in the sun, it is tiring. Watching the water continually can get, is, can be really boring, and you don't want your lifeguards to be bored. So those regular breaks are critical. Protection from the elements, again, you know, being out in the sun for eight hours has a real impact on you, but there's also rain and wind and lightning. They need proper functioning equipment and, I'd emphasize, they need those elevated points of observation. So I'll get into our recommendations here. We're recommending five lifeguards Monday through Thursday at South Beach, six Friday to Sunday. And why is that? Because when we broke down the Because when we broke down the stats and the information we were able to get from the, that data is your busiest days are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They're not all identical, but they're the busiest days. And Monday through Thursday is less busy. So what we envision is having a couple of lifeguards come in early, a couple of lifeguards come in late, and one in the middle of the day, but I'll talk a little bit more about that. And at North Beach, five lifeguards daily. And let me, let me just explain the, the difference between South Beach and North Beach in, in two ways, so you can understand why we approached it this way. One of the great things about North Beach is the parking lot is well away from the pier. And the pier is probably, the piers are probably your biggest hazard out there. People, when they arrive at the beach, don't want, walk very far. They tend to get in their car and go straight to the water. So the beauty of North Beach, the way it's configured, is going straight to the water is a significant distance from the piers and it's naturally safer because of that. South Beach is not that way. But the second issue is that prevailing swells in the summertime, prevailing surf seems to come from the south and hit that pier at South Beach and not be so much of an issue at North Beach. Now, that's not every day, that's not all the time. Swells come from different directions, but if you look at the drowning data, you see that South Beach is, is a greater challenge than North Beach is. So we're recommending that you have one chief lifeguard, whatever you call that person, five days a week, who's overseeing the entire program. We're recommending all of the lifeguards work staggered shifts, coming in nine to five, 10:30 to 6:30, and then 12:30 to 8:30. Why is that? Because again, if you look at the attendance patterns, there's obviously people down there in the morning, less than there are midday, and then you still have people on the beach until 8:30 and in some, some cases after that. You asked us about those north beach accesses, what should happen? Our view, based on the call volume and the circumstances up there, is that part of the job of the north beach lifeguards will, to be, to regularly patrol those areas, talk to people that are up there, give preventive advice and so forth, and then if there are emergencies, to respond up there. But at this point, based on the level of attendance, as we understand it up there and your past experience with tragedies in, in that area, that seems like an area that can be handled in that way. Obviously, we recommend that they all be trained to USLA standards. And I talked about the chief lifeguard, but we're recommending below that, three categories, a supervising lifeguard, a lead lifeguard, and, and regular lifeguards. Now, what's the rationale behind this? You've got, you've got two beaches that are geographically separated. They, they can't back each other up the way they are right now. So they have to, they have to manage themselves independently of each other. So we, we are proposing to have two lifeguards come on from nine to five at each beach. And we want, we recommend that you would want at least one person who is a supervising lifeguard or a lead lifeguard on the beach at all times, whether at the, on the morning shift or the evening shift, and that part doesn't matter so much. So that's, that's the concept there. And so you would have one of your lead or supervising lifeguards working nine to five and one from 12:30 to 8:30. That's good. Thanks. So equipment recommendations, what do they need? The basic stuff that you would expect for lifeguards and USLA standards outline those. We put them in the report, but you know, the, the basic things that you would imagine. I would, I would emphasize that we recommend there be a automatic external defibrillator on each beach and AED. Those lifeguards, just in their CPR training, would be qualified to operate those. And you know, there is a number of medical aids that happen on beaches when you have a whole bunch of people congregated, just like when you have a concert or whatever, that may be completely unrelated to the water, but you have trained people with medical aid capabilities there and you want them properly outfitted. Rescue boards, meaning rescue surfboard, like the one you see on top of that ATV there. And I just took a photo of that ATV the other day. It just gives you an example. There are two people can sit in it, there's enough area in the back for equipment, and you can also, if somebody gets injured, put them on a stretcher and move them off the beach to wherever she has comes. Two-way radios are essential for the lifeguards to communicate with each other, but it's also really important that these folks be able to have direct radio comms with your local PD and also with the 911 center, so that they can immediately request backup or medical response if need be. So here's a couple of towers, example towers. There's a couple of companies that are sort of, make most of the towers that are out there. One makes them out of aluminum, one makes them out of fiberglass. There are a whole bunch of different ranges of, of these lifeguard towers, so you don't have to look at this and assume that this is the one that you would need. But we recommend that you have three at South Beach and two at North Beach. And the way that would work is that on the weekdays at South Beach, you would most likely staff two of those towers during that entire nine to eight-thirty period, and three on the weekends, or the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. On North Beach, you'd probably staff both of them in the, in the midday periods, so, yeah. And some other recommendations here. Rip current signs to national standards, so I showed you that sign earlier. Just recommend that you would want to come into compliance with the national standard. I talked a little bit about this north beach issue and how you naturally are, have a safer situation because of where the parking lot is, but there's ways at South Beach to encourage people to swim away from the piers. For example, there is a disabled access ramp that goes out and you can put that in the middle of the beach, so it's not near the piers. And people use those to walk down to the beach anyway. So there, there are those, those are just a couple of examples, but there are many other examples about how to sort of encourage people, push them away from those hazardous areas. Recommend that you assign lifeguards to code enforcement and that may create some other savings for you, but my experience as a lifeguard was we were responsible for pretty much everything that went out on the, on, out on the beach. And in talking to, that's okay. And in talking to the lifeguards who were here in the pre-2001 area, that was a standard assignment for them. And they explained, and it was, it's my experience, that 99% of people just comply when they're advised. And for the 1% who don't, then you call the PD to back you up and that's another reason for the radio. And then on the flags, I guess that's bullet number two. We're recommending that you really reduce these flags down to just on the lifeguard towers. Several reasons for that. One of them is, conditions change and can change pretty rapidly. And the norm in areas of the country that use flags, and not all do, is to put them on the lifeguard towers so that the lifeguards can immediately change them. The difficulty, I think, with the number of flags you have and the number of areas is it's, it's not possible to quickly adjust the flags if conditions change quickly. And so that may leave people with, you know, bad advice, basically. And then, oh yes, and then bullet number four is just that, at those beaches, at those north accesses, while you already have signs up there saying, no lifeguard, swim at your own risk, we recommend that you put up signs specifically saying, swim near a lifeguard, lifeguard, lifeguard protected areas are, and give the areas where they are, so that you're encouraging people to swim in those lifeguard protected areas. Obviously, people, not everybody's going to do that, and that's fine, but at least you're giving them a safer option. So obviously, this is not going to be free. We tried to come up with a number for what it might, might cost you staffing-wise, and we came up with $234,000 a year. So how reliable is this? Somewhat. What we had to do was, we had to determine what we thought it would take you to recruit or attract and retain quality individuals that you could feel confident would continue through the summer season and would be able to meet the minimum swim standards and so forth, and that were people that you would want out on your beaches doing this kind of work. So we came up with a figure, the average figure of $25 an hour. Now, is that right? Is that not right? I will say, I would say that that's why you have a human resources director who will know the exact figure that's going to make this work. But that was our guess and, and that was based on some input we got from one of the individuals who responded to your RFP, who had actually done some advertising for lifeguards. And his number, he got a lot of responses, interestingly enough, a lot of people who were interested in doing the job. And, and his number was in the ballpark of what we suggest. So no guarantees on that, but that's what we think. And, and I want to emphasize, that only includes the hourly rate. So if there are social security costs and so forth, I mean, that's something for your staff to figure out. We didn't include that. Basic equipment and uniforms, that's some of the stuff that I was talking about. We think the first year it'd be somewhere around $20,000, I think, probably under that. And then ongoing, maybe $10,000 a year. So why is it different? Well, you buy a rescue buoy, they last for 10 years. You buy swim fins, they last for five years, unless the lifeguard loses the fins in the water, for example. So you see that some of that stuff, you've got to restock the first aid kits on a continual basis and so forth, and other things will last a significant period of time. Two-way radios, and we didn't cost those out because I'm sure you have your own contracts and whatever for two-way radios, so we didn't know what to come up with there. ATVs, we were informed of the possibility of a loner program there. Our suggestion is that you, you need one on each beach and probably one as a backup because you don't want a situation where one of these goes out of commission and the lifeguards have no ATV for that day. So probably what you're going to need ultimately is three to ensure that. And so either have to work off the loner program or, or whatever the cost would be. Chief lifeguard vehicle, that person's going to need a vehicle to move from beach to beach. And so that's up to whatever you guys pay for those kinds of things. And then PWC. So this is a personal watercraft that we're talking about. And you are a community that cries out for lifeguards with a, a personal watercraft that can make rescues. And the reason why is because of that isolation between the piers. So if you have a lifeguard or lifeguards who are trained to operate a personal watercraft and they have a rescue sled on the back, they're very quick, you can take them right off the beach, go out and make the rescue, bring the person right back. But in this particular case, you can, you could keep it at one beach or the other. And then with the radio, if, if the need is at South Beach and the personal watercraft's at North Beach, they can zip down there and help out if somebody's pulled out by one of the piers or whatever. The only caveat here is that, our recommendation is that only experienced lifeguards operate a personal watercraft. And our feeling is that in the first year or two, as you're slipping into this, would probably not be the time to put lifeguards on personal watercrafts ref, right away. But as soon as reasonably possible that you have a mature staff who can handle them. And I'll emphasize that on PWCs, there are loads of loner programs out there, so you would probably have little to no cost for that, once you could use it. And, okay, so the towers, really, I mean, that's your big sticker item in terms of a capital cost. They vary from, yeah, $16,000 a year to $75,000 a year. Now, those, those towers last 20 years, something like that. But obviously, you're in a position where you need to purchase five. And realistically, it's not like you can turn around and get them tomorrow. This isn't, you know, Dunkin' Donuts where you can just go in and buy, buy one. They have to be ordered and there's some significant lead time. But there are many beaches around the country, including Los Angeles County, who actually build their own lifeguard towers. So it's not as if you have to purchase one of the ones that I showed you back there or something like that. The reason that lifeguard agencies tend to go toward those is that they're pre-made, they're really well-designed, they can be pulled off of the beach in the off-season, which obviously would be necessary here. And they're really long-lasting because what they're made out of. So it's a, as I say, it's probably a once every 20-year cost for each one of the towers. That's good. Possible revenue sources, I think I really mentioned that earlier about the idea of parking revenue and so forth, so I suppose you're the experts on that, not me, so I won't go too far into that. So, yeah, what's all this, what are the benefits of it? We tried to put down what we thought you would see from this. The reduced drowning fatalities, obviously. Reputation as a safe beach community. Enhanced visitor services with the lifeguards out there that people come, can come up and talk to them. We believe there'd be greatly limited civil liability exposure. And I want to, I just want to emphasize, and I understand what Kate was saying and why, why she was saying it or why the attorneys may believe that. I'm not going to argue the issue of whether our interpretation of Michigan Supreme Court's civil liability issues is, is right or, or the city attorney is more accurate on that. But there's just no question that if you don't have a drowning fatality, you're not going to have a lawsuit as a result of it. And the guy on the left, the guy on the left is an actual lifeguard. The guy on the right just plays one on TV. And obviously, that was some time ago because I didn't just decide yesterday to start shaving my head. So anyway, thank you very much. And we're here to answer any questions, obviously.
Okay, counsel, any questions? George.
Chris, Andy, thank you for your very detailed report, really appreciate it. One, the one question I had is on the personnel costs. Did you include like the training time that it would take for the guards to get trained?
I'm glad you asked that, because that's an oversight on our part, no. And so what is the training? The training is, the USLA training is a 40-hour training academy, or whatever, a 40-hour course. And then they're required to have a minimum of 21 hours of first aid training and CPR training. Different lifeguard agencies handle that in different ways. For example, some make it a prerequisite, some reimburse lifeguards who get the training on their own and some, some do it in-house. And you, the reason you, obviously, you're pointing out a good oversight and an important oversight, but it's also important that we require that that training be provided before the lifeguards are assigned to the beach, in other words, the entire 40 hours. So if you really are deploying lifeguards on Memorial Day weekend, for example, it would have to take place before then. So add, add 40, adds, no, add 70 hours per lifeguard.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I had to remember what my question is. Yeah, thank you both and your whole team for coming up with this program and doing such good work on the two-way radio or the direct communication with the local police department or 911. If we absolutely cannot get a direct line to them, does that mean that this would not be successful to have this here, or is there an alternative?
No, it's just a question of, you know, expediting backup resources. If you're unable to do that, then it's just going to take that much longer to get backup resources. And I think if I understood the discussion about this correctly, the county's dispatch center, well, which brand it was, but the county's dispatch center requires people to have background checks at a certain level to be on the radio system, if I recall correctly. And so that's part of the issue. But in talking to your police officers, my understanding is there is a, there's a level at which that you're not a full police officer or firefighter, but you can be qualified under certain circumstances. But I can't, can't guarantee that. But I can't guarantee that. But I would say the bottom line is, it's a nice-to-have, it's not an absolute necessity to have. But, you know, you really want to get resources as quickly as possible in drowning cases.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, sir.
If we went with lifeguards, what would your role be? Because there's so many moving parts, as you showed up here. What would your agency, what would your, the USLA, what would your role be in helping us try to coordinate all these different moving parts and get us started?
Sure. In terms of the big picture, I mean, we're here, we're doing this on a voluntary basis, right? So we want to see you succeed, and we'll do what we can within reason to help out. What we have done in the past, when a community is wanting to start up lifeguards and has never had a, or hasn't had a program before in a long time, is there are retired lifeguards who have run agencies, who have done training and so forth. And we've typically given those communities a list of people to talk to and, you know, potentially to contract with, at least at the beginning, until the agency, the organization can get up on its own feet. So that's an option. But I mean, we want you to succeed, so we'll do the best we can to help out.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah, thank you for this report and all the work. For, you had talked about one AED at each beach, so you propose one AED per beach, not per stand.
Yeah, I mean, you can always, I mean, the more you have, the better. But, you know, AEDs are fantastic, they're not actually very effective in drowning cases, typically they're not. So what you're talking about here is somebody has a sudden cardiac arrest on the beach. Just for the fact that you have them at each beach, think of how much faster an AED is going to get to them than the current circumstances, right? So, yeah, each one that you put out, that's just going to cut down the time to get to somebody. And they're surprisingly not that terribly expensive, so.
And so with the training time required, and us already being in April, I mean, what is the feasibility of having lifeguards on North and South Beach this year?
Well, I have enormous faith in Kate's ability to get this sorted out.
Me too.
But honestly, I, we are not experts on your local hiring community. We're not experts on how you go about hiring people and so forth. That's your staff who are the experts on those kinds of things. I don't know, I do know, as I mentioned, that one of the persons that submitted the RFP put something up on, as you imagine, the internet or social media or whatever, and get immediate interest from, I think he said 30 people. So I think there's the potential that there's significant numbers of people out there who would qualify, who were interested in doing it. But we didn't go through that process to determine that. In terms of putting the training on, if you were to decide you wanted to contract with somebody like we were talking about, I'm very confident you could get somebody out here to put on the training course for you when you needed it preseason. So I don't think that piece is the issue. I think it's the recruiting part, you know, I'm sure your human resources people would have to put together job classifications, come up with the pay that, I don't know who approves, maybe the council approves, and do some recruiting and so forth. I mean, yeah, you've got to, you'd have to move fast based on where we are now in the calendar.
And for the tools that you spoke of for lifeguards, you talked about the personal watercraft, the jet ski. And, I mean, I do know that we had a local person swim across the river to save somebody from South to North Beach, I believe. So, yeah, watercraft would definitely be that. Have you had much experience with Emily, the Emily robot?
Yes, I should say that Emily is a sponsor of the USLA. But I will say that I do not know of any, I know of only one lifeguard agency in the U.S. that uses it as part of lifeguard accoutrement. They're more typically used by fire departments with non-swimming people, so that they can respond and put them in the water and so forth. So the potential value of Emily, or the Emily device, is that it can get, you know, out to somebody quickly. There are several limitations. One of them is, obviously, wherever it is, somebody's got to get it down there, and it's a fairly big device, put it in the water and put it out in the water. Once it gets to the person, they need to be conscious and therefore able to hold on so that, you know, it keeps them afloat. If they're not conscious, it's not going to do them any good. And then finally, you need to be able to get the person back to the beach, and the device is not powerful enough under most circumstances to be able to bring somebody back. So you've got to have a lifeguard get out there anyway. So when you think about that one in 18 million figure, I just think in San Diego, for example, where I am, that there are around 6,000 drownings, I mean, rescues from drowning a year. And that is not a piece of equipment they would use.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jeff, any questions?
None for Chris, but thank you for your time.
But thanks.
And Andy, thank you for your help, too. And thank you.
Any other comments, Kate, or?
I don't have any other comments. Was there anything that counsel had, any question of city staff or city attorney Andy Gordon?
Yeah, Andy, I was wondering if you could speak to Chris's comments about liability? You're the lawyer.
Yeah, the one thing to expand upon Kate's prior comment on the concern with the clarification of Michigan law, and this is looking to page 15 of the USLA's report, third from the last paragraph. So they're referring to a case called Shearheart v. City of Troy. And in that paragraph, it states that this case was appealed to the Michigan Supreme Court and heard on November 9th, 2021. The Supreme Court ruled in part that as a matter of law, lifeguards delay, even if it constitutes gross negligence, cannot be a cause in fact of a person's drowning. Our office disagrees with that characterization of what the Supreme Court said in Shearheart v. City of Troy. I have a copy of the actual order that the Supreme Court held in that one. And just kind of reading from this, it says, "In part, in lieu of granting appeal to leave, we vacate that part of the Court of Appeals opinion, holding that as a matter of law, a lifeguard's delay, even if it constitutes gross negligence, cannot be a cause in fact of a person's drowning." The next sentence in that opinion reads, "This court rejects the notion that a governmental employee's failure to intervene can never constitute the proximate cause of an injury." So we don't believe that the court, in that case, held that a lifeguard's delay can never constitute the cause in fact, but rather would turn on the facts and circumstances of the individual matter at issue. So that's the one comment that we added to that one.
Okay. Wendy?
Can I ask, Chris, one more question?
Sure.
So I think one big concern up here in the community is if we went forward with the lifeguard program and we didn't have enough staff to be on the beaches adequately, whatever that would mean. Do you know of that being a common situation? Or, like, how do communities handle that if there is a staff shortage?
Well, at risk of getting into the liability issue, let me just say this. Up to now, for 24 years or whatever, you've chosen not to have, not you personally, but chosen not to have lifeguards. If you look from a priority perspective, there is no question that South Beach is your higher hazard area. So if I were to advise you, not from a legal perspective, but from a prioritization perspective, I would advise you to move forward with South Beach before North Beach. If you couldn't attract enough staff, at least you make that beach safer. And you can always put those signs over at North Beach saying, "We recommend you," just the ones that I suggested at the areas to the north. So, yeah, so that's an option, it seems to me.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Can you move your microphone closer to them?
Kind of an offshoot of that is, are you aware of areas where they provide lifeguards on just part of the beach and not the whole length of the beach?
Yeah, that's the norm, really. I mean, I was a lifeguard chief in San Diego, we have 26 miles of beaches and eight are guarded. So, I mean, and that's just normal.
Any other questions? Okay, we were asked to receive the report from USLA and consider next steps. Tell me what you'd like to do and how would you like to go forward with this?
I'll make a motion if I can. I move for city council to take action to implement the first steps of a lifeguard program for the 2025 beach season, per the USLA report recommendations. Support.
Any more discussion on this? George.
So the question I'm not fully understanding yet is how much the lifeguard program is going to cost and how it's going to get paid for. So the one thing I don't want to do is do a lifeguard program, but not do it where it's a good lifeguard program. So I'd rather see us take this year, this summer, to get everything fully in place so that next year we can have a lifeguard program that's fully in place and get it going that way. I do support having, returning lifeguards to our beaches. I just don't want us to try to rush through and get something in and have it not be what it should be.
Joe?
Can we tonight, I guess, take a vote that we do or do not want to move forward with a lifeguard program? And also state that we don't want to put a timetable on it to give staff time to look at things like cost, like income, like liability, and some of these other issues that still are not completely finalized. But at least to the community and to ourselves sitting up here, that we've made a commitment that we are going to go forward, unless something comes up that would prevent the program. But at least make a statement that we're going to go forward. Is that possible?
Well, there's, oh, go ahead.
Comment to that. My hesitation would be same as George's, I don't know that we know the cost yet. You know, I was trying to run some numbers, you know, 234,000, that doesn't include social security, 100, I said 30,000 on the tower, so 150,000 there, 20 in equipment, so 400,000. But then we still haven't purchased the ATVs, a car for the chief, you know, the personal watercraft, which the personal watercraft we don't need right away. I just don't feel like the numbers are there. I don't want to say, make a statement, yes, I'll vote for lifeguards, once we get that, because I want that number out there for the public to know, because I want to know where that money's going to come from. We can definitely raise some parking fees, we could, you know, restructure some of that stuff, but I think it's going to take some cuts. And I just, I want the citizens to know what's going to get cut if we're going to do this. So do I want to continue exploring this? Absolutely. Is it important? Absolutely. But I'm not ready to move forward until we can put some dollar signs to this stuff.
Okay, we have, go ahead, Mary. Wendy.
I mean, someone brought it up earlier that we did have this as a priority for this current fiscal year, so we should have some money budgeted for this. When I was trying to add up some numbers, and I thought I was being kind of generous, putting it at 350,000 for the first year with the startup fees, which is under what we budgeted for it. And I think by taking the first steps, if we voted on this tonight, part of the first steps would be having that line budget to look at. But I do see no problem with us being able to find that money through raising the parking fees. I like the idea of that going to hourly. But it's already been a priority that's been budgeted, so I guess I don't understand the problem there.
Yeah, and I was going to say the budget was 700,000.
Right.
So that's above what was estimated. And I feel that it's more kicking the can down the road, doing it into next year. I mean, I had asked for a report similar to this in January of '24, and it wasn't brought to us until March of '25. We knew that if we wanted anything last year, we needed to start in January. We knew last year if we wanted anything this year, we should have started in January, and we haven't. It sounds from public comments that we have potential lifeguards here. We can build this out with how Chris had mentioned it, by at least starting on South Beach, where the most drownings occur. And if we have done enough recruitment, we expand it to North Beach. It's already isolated anyway and non-contiguous with other public beaches, so that appears to make sense to me to at least start on South Beach, so that we at least get this started, to do our priority from the 24, 25 priorities.
Megan, can you repeat the motion?
Yes, I have moved to, I'm sorry, moved to direct city council to take action to implement the first steps of a lifeguard program as laid out in the USLA proposal is what I got at the end there.
Okay. I don't know if I should amend that to say, to direct staff.
Or if necessary, to look at South Beach first and then progress to North Beach. I don't, because here, the recommendation is both beaches. I just don't know what.
Yeah.
I don't know what first steps are. What are first steps?
I think that, to me, that is first staff to figure out whether that's coming out with a line item budget of what they've given us, or if it's coming up with job descriptions, I think. I mean, if you want us to come up here with first, second, third steps, I would be a fan of that.
Let's stick with the motion and let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, Hozli? Yes. Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Arnold?
No.
And Brown?
No.
That is a tie.
Okay, so the motion fails. We can move on? Or Joe, did you want to make your motion for, that you discussed?
No.
The car motion's fine.
Okay, we're moving on?
Can I ask a question, though?
Sure.
We're missing one council person tonight and can't hold off the vote. Do we have the option at another city council meeting in the near future to bring the same motion up again and take another vote?
Yes.
Thanks.
Did you have a question, too?
I was wondering if we had other first steps that we wanted to give staff.
Yeah, if we could talk about that. I mean, whatever you guys are asking for.
One thing that I would like to talk about, that when we met with Chris and Andy, the flag system. And having, I remember our thought process behind our current system, but then talking to Chris, it really made sense that we should be with the yellow, red, double red. And so that's a simple. And so, that's a simple, quick thing I think we can agree on, maybe.
I wouldn't say it's a simple and quick thing. You have to reorder all your, all of your signs and have them all placed, or if you're going to follow the US LA report, you're not going to have perhaps signage at your northern beaches, so unless you're going to have a lifeguard there. I mean, you could put them there and just have them check on it, but according to their report, they recommend you not putting a flag sign up there unless you have someone there to assess the conditions.
Understanding that, and I'm just thinking that based on what Chris and Andy were telling us, it's maybe a better practice than what we have. So, if we just use our current polls and just update the flags. I just remember Chief Hinn saying, no water's safe, and Chris repeated that.
Right.
And so, I like that, yellow, red.
I have to go back and check, because we also have, we have a settlement from 2000, I want to say seven, so I'm not entirely sure how we can just remove an entire color. But.
So, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
I know that there has been a lot of discussion about the red flag versus double red flags, and there's a lot of confusion, because a lot of people think, well, I thought red flag meant that it was dangerous water, so don't go in, but what's the double red flag? So, we'd have to get some new signage there, which means for all the beaches, if we're going to have that, that kind of signage there. So, I guess I'm just looking for a direction. Where do you want to go here from the council?
Can we ask you to come up with that information that the other council people are looking for?
Yeah, I was going to say, come back with cost of wages and social security, so that we have a more complete picture. And how those expenses may also potentially be offset by fewer BEA, Beach Enforcement attendants. I would think that we would not need them at the same beaches where we have lifeguards. And I think that's one position that routinely does not have all of the people. They start and leave. I just remember from the last couple of years, it seemed like it was always down a headcount.
Do you want to make that into a motion?
And is this going to be for the recommendation for North and South Beach, or what? I'm looking for some clarity here.
I would do it for both, North and South Beach. We can bifurcate it if we proceed on just South Beach, but I think it would be beneficial to have the information for both beaches. And it would, I would move that to direct staff to come back to City Council with an itemized list of costs for the lifeguard staffing that was proposed in the US LA report for North and South Beach. And based on the estimated equipment, and I would go with one AED per beach versus per stand.
I would add the cost of storage of the five lifeguard stands.
We'd have to make sure they're able to be moved with our equipment.
Yep.
That, too.
I think they're usually stored behind the water.
Yeah, if we go back almost to the beginning of all these discussions, the one thing City Council asked for is to bring an outside concern in and give us guidance how to start a lifeguard program. And in my opinion, we've had that tonight, and from an agency that's highly regarded around the country. So, we've got the plans laid out in front of us. It's just a matter of putting numbers to it and see if it works for us. So, I don't want to scrub this or push it back. No, I know you're not saying that. So, I just want to make it clear that if we get this additional information from city staff, then we can then be prepared to take a vote, because then it'll do away with the concerns about the income and the expenses. But we have a plan of action that's been given to us that we can vote on at that point. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Is that a second to my motion for the?
Okay, Megan, are you set with the motion?
Can I restate it just quickly?
Yes, please.
Okay. I typed real fast there. So, to direct staff to come back to City Council with an itemized list of cost for lifeguard staffing that was proposed in the US LA report for North and South Beach, based on the estimated equipment needed, including an AED on each beach rather than each tower. That is what Mary said.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes?
Could I move to take a five-minute recess?
Sure. We will take a five-minute recess.
... a lot of business in Michigan. Let's see, I just finished Kent County Road, this is April, February, Grandville, by the way, your former assistant city manager says hi, and Kentwood, and Holland. And we just got a call from a couple of other entities. So, we're familiar with the area. But these are the kinds of studies we do all over the United States, because everyone has the same issues. I'll walk through that when you're creating a system to attract and retain talent in public and in private. So, just briefly, what a compensation system is, kind of comp 101, because there's various elements. There's the internal element of compensation. That's basically your hierarchy. What we did, we came in here and we interviewed every single one of your department heads, so we could get a complete picture of not only how you're structured, what your priorities are, what your challenges are, but also what are the skill sets that you imply and how do you employ them? Because, just because your city means nothing to us. We need to know what you're about, what you employ, and how you do this, and what your philosophy and strategy is. So, that's that internal part of, how do you value jobs as a city in regard to the strategic priorities and goals that are presented by the council to staff or staff to execute? Then, I'll walk you through also the external. That is, what is the market? And you compete in various markets, and I'll get into that. What is the minimum and maximum value of comparable skill sets to the ones that you have to employ here at the city? So, we have to find that out, so we can make sure we benchmark you in that sweet spot so that you are able to compete. There's a lot of other things that go to employment, you know, work environment, opportunity, reputation, benefits, et cetera. But consider compensation like the foundation of the house. Before you build the man cave and the nursery, everything, the foundation asks and answers the question, do we have the ability to attract and retain? So, we have to look at that. And it's not sexy, but it's critical, that last part, and that falls on Kim, the ability to maintain the system. A comp system is a living being. It's like your car. You got to change the oil, you got to check the air on the tires. Because your market, your priorities, your jobs, they change. And we don't have to go through what just happened, but you can go back, all the years of my career, the labor market continuously fluctuates. What you do for a living, tomorrow, don't panic, you may get a zoo. So, now I got to go hire zoo people. So, I got to describe zoo people. I got to find out how much zoo people cost, so I can attract and retain them. So, Kim has to have the ability to continuously update changes in jobs, new jobs, priorities, changes in the labor market, to keep it viable, because if not, it's just going to break. So, flip this way. I'm sorry. So, our task was basically, in a nutshell, to benchmark, as I said, your skill sets to your labor markets, and I'll get into that. First of all, the job descriptions are a critical element in any environment, because they describe your job. We don't do titles, we compare job to job. And what the job is, is basically these elements. Now, a job description serves a tremendous amount of duties and responsibilities in itself to the organization. But this is what we have to go to, to find out, what is this job at City of South Haven? What is it expected to do? What are the duties and responsibilities? What are the knowledge and skills I need to perform those duties and responsibilities? And then what's the education experience I need to get the knowledge and skills to perform the duties and responsibilities? Also critical, are there working requirements? Are there physical requirements? Are there certifications? Are there licenses? All of these are important when we do an apples-to-apples comparison out in the market. But remember, we're looking at jobs in this study, not people. People are priced by the organization in that range that we provide, based upon education, experience, longevity, performance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we have to create that range of what is this skill set pay in the market, minimum and maximum? So, we're looking at jobs. And why it is, for folks like you, the biggest fixed cost. You provide a service, so that makes sense, that your biggest fixed cost is people. But you also, from the perspective of service, have to make sure, not just the attraction, but what's been really, really a challenge for organizations, private and public, in the last five to 10 years, is retaining. I live in a market where employers do not hesitate in any way, shape, or form. I know you, and I know you work somewhere, and you could just step in and you could get things done in two seconds. I have no problem writing you a check for $10,000 more. Don't buy me nothing, because what I'm going to get out of that. So, retention has turned into a more critical element for employers. Not to belittle traction, but it has become critical, because talent is mobile and talent is transferable, especially amongst like-minded employers who are doing the same thing. And it's also important, because you want to make sure that you do have folks that are providing, again, service to your public. I mean, if I call you and say my poopy pipe is leaking, and you send somebody and they're looking at a YouTube video, that's not going to make me, as a taxpayer, feel very well. But I get somebody I know is trained, is competent, knows what they're doing, that's why I ask for this service. That's why I'm relying on this service. So, for a service provider like you, people are even more important from a skills and duty perspective. And just to emphasize, I know I already said that we look at jobs, but we really need to maintain that perspective. And that last bullet is very, very important, because, you'll forgive me, my minor background is labor economics. Supply and demand. Supply and demand is always the third rail when it comes to labor, because the market, no offense, the market does not care who you are. They don't care that you're public, that you're nice people, that you provide service. They don't care. The market's just going to tell you. The market's just going to tell you, this is what the value of the skill set is. So if I leave here and I have to go buy milk on the way to wherever I'm going, there's one price for milk for you and one for me? No, it's the same price. I have three choices. Buy the milk, don't buy the milk, buy a cow. As an employer, when you're going in the labor market, and let's say, I went to Kim and I said, here's a description of a web developer. Could you please look for me and see what the market rate, minimum and maximum value is for this skill set that I've identified, because the city needs this to perform their objectives? The market's going to tell me what it is. So as an employer, I've got three choices. Buy me a web developer, don't do it, contract out, do without, et cetera, or train from within over a period of time. And it's harsh, but it's just, the labor market is really that bloody. So that's why it's even more important for you as an employer to be cognizant of what those fluctuations are and what the values are for those skill sets that you want to attract and retain. We looked at two different markets. There are some jobs that you have that are associated with other public agencies, where you compete directly with other public agencies. There are some jobs, though, where you have to compete with the overall market. So if Kim, for example, won Powerball today, don't get excited, and I cast my net on the ocean of applicants, that skill set could come from the private or the public sector. You have some common fields, finance, maintenance, HR, et cetera, IT. So we looked at the private sector market as well. But you have some jobs where you want to make sure that you're aligned with your public sector competitors. So we went to this list that we discussed with this... And this is also important, from that maintenance part that I mentioned to you before, so you can benchmark yourselves, and you can accurately see trend, and you can see movement, and you can anticipate and budget and be on top of that in the future by monitoring these folks. And this is what your other peers are doing, not only in this area, but all over the United States. So in Grandville, we had a list, looked just like, you know, a list, same thing. We looked at private and public, some firefighters, police, obviously. So this is the list that we looked at, when we looked at that, and the list that you'll want to look at as you monitor and you trend your movement. This is just a graphical of the aggregate of all of your jobs, of where you are with the market, from a minimum, midpoint, maximum standpoint. My understanding, as usual, is after this report, staff will come up with some recommendations. They will approach you with that separately. I don't know if you want to speak to that, but we're just letting you know that this is where your position is to market, so now you can make the appropriate, as an aggregate, the appropriate plans. We also provided you reports for your collective bargaining units legally. That will be provided through the collective bargaining process to then enhance the decisions, negotiations, the give and take that takes place there. So those will be given to the unions during the normal process of collective bargaining. And so our recommendation is obviously to align yourself. Your staff, as I said, will come up with the analyses of how to make that possible, and what the cost or implications of that is, so that you can get yourself, again, in that sweet spot of being able to compete for attraction and retention of talent in conjunction with your competition. Again, I don't want to lose face of the fact that compensation is important, but don't lose focus on the other elements that make South Haven what they are. But you also have multiple generations in your workforce, and so compensation is something that you may mean more to one end of your age scale than the other, but you also have a total compensation package, and I know that Kim is aware of what those values are, et cetera. But you do want to get in that sweet spot from your competitors, so that compensation is negated as an element that causes people not to be attracted, or causes people to want to consider offers from your competitors. And I just gave you a comp philosophy. Think of it as, again, a blueprint, but something for you guys to think about. It articulates not only for you, as a governing board, and for the allocation of your resources, but also communicates to your staff how you manage your compensation, what your philosophy is as a city, what your strategy is towards that. I just gave you a vanilla ice cream type of thing here, but you might want to have some conversations with city manager and HR director about maybe having a compensation philosophy and articulating that in one of your governance documents or in your recruitment efforts. So just threw that in there for something you may want to discuss or talk about, or maybe not. So I think we're... Questions? So I'm your hostage. How may I help you?
Any questions? Was there anything that made you, you know, just your eyes pop open, or that you can discuss?
Not with you guys. No, no. You know, when you look at that chart, it's not that bad. I mean, I've seen, most people post-pandemic are around that minus five or so area. And bear in mind, by the way, I'm glad you asked that. Margin of error is about three, okay? Again, when I mention sweet spot, I use that term on purpose. I know it's not very technical, but you're going to want to get to within a statistical percentage of your competition, where again, it's negated. You're not... I haven't had, we've done a lot of people all over the country, but even your peers, anybody who's really worse than that. I mean, I had one on the West Coast, but they didn't do anything for 10 years. So theirs was pretty ugly, but they understood... Well, the city council that was there wasn't at fault for that, right? They weren't there. But most of them are falling around five. I'm glad you asked that, post-pandemic, because another issue is the lower end of the wage market since the pandemic, and it's starting to go plain out. Experienced more accelerated growth than the higher end. And what I mean by that is your starting level jobs, your minimum wage jobs, experienced about a 30% increase in compensation in regard to other jobs, like your high-level professionals and technical, who probably experienced maybe a 10%. And that's a combination of fluctuations, what happened in the wage market as a pandemic, changes in labor, changes in workforce, changes in allocation. Those are starting to come down in most parts of the country. You're starting to see minimum wages, I use that term loosely, start to come down a little in industries that use them, like retail, fast food, et cetera. But some of that's reflected in that lower end really took off in the last three or four years, and some of that's sticky. It's staying there. So... And some of that stickiness has caused losses in employment in those sectors as well. So it's complicated, but that's not unusual. Your chart's not, pretty much everybody's landing in that minus five. Thank you for asking that.
Oh, thank you. George?
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to thank Kate and Kim for making the effort to look at this, because I think this is the kind of thing that if you don't look at it periodically, you're going to regret it later on. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I thank them too, because again, you guys, your bread and butter is attracting and retaining people, because that's what you do for a living. And there's a lot of movement out there right now. Now, it's not to say people aren't staying with it. There's more to the employment, but compensation is getting, it's getting wacky, and you don't want to lose a perfectly good person for something like that. Yeah, thank you.
Kim?
Yeah, I'll just add that, you know, every year we do take a look at the annual Michigan Municipal League Salary Survey, and we look at those for each of the nonrepresented positions. This is a nice way to look at the private sector as well, because MML is looking at just municipalities. So this was a great way to look at the private sector market for some of those positions that could go anywhere. And so what we're looking at doing is making some minor tweaks. So instead of maybe just doing the flat 3.5% increase for somebody, bumping that up to 7%, so we're not trying to necessarily get all of these folks that may have been identified as being a little under the market, getting them all up there right now, but making minor incremental steps, so then that way we can get them there, and all of that will be added to the budget for council to approve.
Good. Yes, sir.
With all that said, don't we also have to look at the state of our revenue? For example, let's say we have the same exact position, same skill levels needed, but the job can be available in Grand Rapids or can be available in South Haven. South Haven is, in total population, decreasing. Grand Rapids is booming right now. So for us to say we can pay the same as Grand Rapids may not be realistic, regardless of job description, regardless of job skills. So that's one other factor you have to look at, is what can we really afford to pay? And how much can taxpayers afford to pay a higher wage? Because ultimately, that's who's paying.
Yeah, a couple of things. That's an excellent, excellent comment, because first of all, you know, when you look at your list, it's like Goldilocks. You're going to have people who are smaller than you, people who are bigger than you, people are the same, because your labor market's the same way. Again, it's getting to that sweet spot. But I seriously, going to your point, I agree. I have not seen an employer, and this is private sector as well, who's had the money that they've wanted to have to do that. So you're right, and that's especially why this is more important, as I said before, to folks like you, because you have to be able to attract and retain within the budget that's given to you. And if there is a flattening out of revenues, or even a dilution of revenues, right now, with healthcare right now, some of my healthcare clients are just, it's ugly, because there's only so much we can do, but they also, the majority of their cost is people, and they're not cheap people, and they're the kind of cheapo... They're the kind of people that the market, they're getting pricier and pricier. Right now, respiratory techs, nurses, oh, it's a nightmare in some metropolitan areas. The average age in Minnesota, I think right now for an RN, is 53, and the schools aren't putting them out fast enough. But the age population, the increase in the population of people who need those occupations, whether it be in hospital, in a clinic, in assisted living, in hospice, but they can't just increase their prices. So you're spot on. Yeah, that's why, again, this is important for you to use this information together, as you put your budget together. What can you do? And what areas can you get the most traction while still being able to attract and retain your talent? And be responsible to the taxpayer by doing this and showing, this is where money's going. This is why we're trying to keep those people, and this is what we have to do to do those things. Yeah. I hope I...
Any other questions?
Okay, just want to make sure. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the night. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, the City Council will be asked to approve Resolution 2025-13, a resolution establishing locations where parking is permitted with restrictions. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. After we passed our, kind of like, parking resolution on the bus last year, we were approached by two business owners that were looking for some adjustments. One being the Shave Cave that's over on Williams Street. They're part of the, one of the two five-minute parking over there. That's the benefit, the Hotel Nichols. There's also two five-minute parking spaces in front of Old Harbor Inn, and those are kind of, those are two hotels down the Central Business District. They really had no area to, for folks to unload their luggage and then to load it back up again. So that's why those two five-minute spots are kind of located near the hotels. We worked out a deal where one of the five-minute parkings in front of, like, the Shave Cave on Williams Street would be moving to Center Street in front of Hotel Nichols. So they would still have their two five minutes, but this also will accommodate Mr. Goodwin, having the ability to have some folks come to his business and not be ticketed the minute they walked through the door. So that's one of the changes that are being proposed. The other proposed is going to be on Quaker Street, next to Maha's Hair Business. She has a number of elderly people who come to her business, and they've noticed with, especially with this winter, there was just a lot of folks who needed assistance getting across that small one-way of Quaker Street. We have two ADA-accessible parking spaces in that lot that's not itemized out on our street's parking resolution, so we would be taking one of those ADA-accessible spots and putting it right next to Maha's, right on Quaker Street, and one of the... And then, of course, that parking space would then be a non-ADA in the parking lot. So those are the only two changes that are being proposed, and we've vetted this out with both the business owners as well as Hotel Nichols, to make sure that we're making everybody as happy as we can.
Great. Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-13, a resolution to adopt locations where parking is permitted with restrictions in accordance with Sections 82-54, 82-55, and 82-56 of the City Code.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the resolution is approved. Next, the City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding the brownfield plan for 432 Phoenix Street. A, hold a public hearing on the brownfield plan, and B, consider approval of Resolution 2025-14, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for the 432 Phoenix Street redevelopment project. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have Assistant City Manager Michael Andis here to answer any questions. Ultimately, this is a brownfield plan that is for the former NNR department store. They're looking to have two commercial units, which are open right now, and then three residential units up above. They would be adding, I think, a garage off the back, as well as an elevator, and they're looking to cover some of those costs. Michael, don't forget to turn on your microphone.
Absolutely. So as manager-hosier of State A Locker &amp; Locker Properties is the developer for this proposed plan, and is looking to redevelop the property at 432 Phoenix Street into a mixed-use development. Housing is now an approved item under the Brownfield Act of the State of Michigan since 2023, and this project is seeking funding as it relates to selective demolition and housing development activities, including utility enhancement. So this project is for three at-rate units above the 432 space, it's a condominium, and these two two-bedroom and one-three-bedroom units will also include the use of new garages constructed off the back with a 88 lift. We have our representative from Locker &amp; Locker here this evening, Lance Zorhoff, with Warner, Norcross, and Judd as well.
Are we supposed to set a public hearing in the future, or is this for tonight?
No, we've already noticed the public hearing, so tonight would be the night to have the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing?
I'm Lance Zorhoff, and I'm here on behalf of Randy and Adam, who couldn't be here tonight. They're out of town. So I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have about the project. It's pretty straightforward, I think. It is three units on the top, two two-bedrooms, one three-bedroom. I think it'll be a nice addition to the downtown. It's their latest plans to invest in South Haven's downtown. So any questions, let me know.
I understand when they went through the building, they found a secret apartment.
That I did not know about.
Apparently, when they were going through, they got outside, and they thought they had seen everything upstairs, and then they said, wait, wait, where's that window? And they went, and a staircase had been removed, and they found a whole other apartment.
Nice.
Hadn't been touched since the 80s.
I'm sure it's nice.
Mary, do you have a question?
I was just going to say, I know it's been before the planning commission. We are very pleased with everything that is being proposed, and we welcome the additional housing.
That's great. It's very good to hear.
Any other questions? Yes, definitely happy about more housing.
Yeah, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The public hearing's closed. Okay. And now, go ahead, Judge.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-14, a resolution approving a brownfield plan for the 432 Phoenix Street redevelopment project.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the resolution is approved. Moving on, the City Council will be asked to approve a community recreation director agreement with South Haven Public Schools. Kate, it sounded like there might be some misunderstandings during public comment?
Yes. So when the, when the city approved, or I'm sorry, when the city council allowed that millage to be put on the ballot, a number of entities came forward and wanted to kind of, kind of massage and get some ideas about what the community is looking for with community recreation. Scott Reiner kind of took the lead on that. He would, had formerly worked for the CBB office, and then he was also working with the SHARA group. And SHARA stands for the South Haven Area Recreation Authority. So what had come before this council, I think before the millage was decided in August of last year, was this plan that of the three entities that could use some of the millage... that could use some of the millage dollars, one of it being the South Haven Rec Authority, the City Parks, and the creation of a community recreation director. So, once the millage was approved, Scott Reiner, who ended up working with the, the SHARA board, really led a lot of the conversations with a lot of the local youth recreation leagues and trying to figure out what people were looking for. He talked with the pickleball groups. He was talking with a number of different groups. And, and also with the SHARA leadership and City of South Haven staff and the South Haven Township staff, along with the school. So ultimately, what we came up with is that majority of the, the properties of where sports recreation could occur on, was only on city, was only on school property. So the idea was that if we're gonna be using the community recreation director as a position that would be scheduling these kind of activities on school property, we may have to use a school employee. The idea is also that this is not just for school-aged individuals, and this is not just for sports recreation. So the idea is that the city would be partnering similar, with the school system, to provide a position where the city would fund it. But then there was benefits given back to the city in, in devising this community recreation director position. And in kind of, speaking to one of the comments I got earlier, which is, what do we use as a method? Or how do we kind of model this position? We actually modeled it on a former school role called the CREC position. If many of you around here are 80s, some of us are, we had Community Recreation Education Center, and that was, that was where CREC came from. So CREC put out the art center classes, CREC did volleyball courses or volleyball tournaments, and CREC did AYSO, what is now AYSO, but the, the, the T-ball leagues, the junior soccer. So the idea was to go back to something like CREC, where this was coming out of the school system. This would be the one-time lump sum payment to the schools for them to, to hire a part-time rec director who would be in charge of lining up all of these recreation opportunities. Knowing that these first year or two, there's gonna be a lot of equipment purchases that have to be made. There's a lot of setting up as to what the community recreation director position is going to look like. Clearly, we have a Parks and Rec Department. We have Erin Prebe, who is our Park Superintendent, who makes sure that all the facilities are working. There will have to be a lot of interplay with that, making sure that all of our stuff is working, because we still do have some parks, but we don't have nearly the amount of park space that, that the South Haven Public Schools has. And moreover, in working with SHARA, they're trying to bring many other opportunities online, such as River Woods and the 14th Avenue. We know that there's, SHARA's trying to go after a, a grant at the River Woods for decking along the riverfront there. But they're also in talks with the pickleball group that are looking to get several courts built for the, for the use of pickleball groups around town. So this position in particular, community recreation director, is a two-year agreement out of a five-year millage, where we would be setting up a position with the school system for a part-time, initially part-time position, knowing that there's a lot of ramping up that has to happen, as well as a lot of equipment purchases for individual sports and/or other opportunities. We're still kind of evolving this, knowing that this is, kind of figuring out who wants to be involved, because that's one thing that came out of the many discussions that we've had with other stakeholder groups, is that these, at least with the youth recreation, is that they would like to have some assistance with the administration, but they're not really ready to turn everything over, because they wanna see how things are working. But that's one of the biggest challenges we've, we've heard from at least youth recreation, is that they are doing so much administration that they're not doing the coaching and all the stuff that they wanna do to be involved. Many of them have to go out and get their own insurance to line up all these coaches, and that's the administrative part that the CRD position could take on. So I guess I'm saying to councils that there's been a lot of thought, a lot of meetings with South Haven's city staff, South Haven Public School staff, the SHARA board members, to try to get where we need to go with this. And I should say that the board members were a rock stein. So there's a lot of groups that have been trying to come together to figure out what this would look like and how this can benefit the community, knowing that this is kind of a moving target, knowing that we're basing this off of millage dollars. And this was, we were conservatively estimating around $90,000 for each, each entity, knowing that sometimes people don't pay all their taxes. So we wanted to give them a conservative amount. Also knowing that the City Parks have some low-hanging fruit we'd like to get to. And SHARA would also like to use some of their dollars to go after other funding. So that's how the $90,000 came apart. And why it's in here is that it's not one position for $90,000. That's for the school to decide how much they'd like to pay. But there is a thought that, yes, there's a lot of work on here for just a part-time position. But there's also a lot of ramping up that has to be done, because this is a brand-new position. And there's the idea that many of the, those dollars could be used for purchasing of equipment. And absolutely, there would have to be an accounting. And the South Haven Public Schools would be coming forward to this body and kind of explaining how they use those, those dollars, year over year.
And Joe, you're on SHARA. So would you like to add anything?
No, I've supported this from day one. My only concerns is the amount of money and will the person be qualified enough to put all this together and make all these programs work? Because this is a big project for one individual.
It is a big project. I know that Scott Reiner has been working as like a, like a director position for SHARA and has been a very good resource to lean on. But there is also a lot more that has to be kind of sussed out. And, and I think that we're trying to get something going so that we can at least figure out what we know and what we don't know and get started on this position, knowing that this is all tied to, to the rec millage. And that this is also something where there's a lot of different people who've got different ideas as to how to get, how this gets done. So the idea is, like, hiring this position, and then they can kind of help fill in what's working, what's not working, and where we have to adjust.
I, I can add, my master's degree is in education leadership, which would allow me to be an athletic director. And so I've had classes about budgeting and retaining coaches and interviewing coaches and hiring referees and stuff like that. And I'm just one, and I can think of four other staff members in the high school that have that same master's degree, and teachers in the middle school that have that, so that the applicant could come from anywhere in the, in the schools. And I actually, I can think of one that's gonna retire. That'd be a great retirement job for him.
Any other questions? Wendy?
Mine is more of a comment, but I feel similarly to Jack and what he expressed. Just, I feel like this could be really well-done as part of our Parks and Rec Department for the city. I mean, I understand the reasoning for going and looking at the school, but I just, I don't know. I feel like that puts certain limitations on it. And what I personally would love to see done with part of this rec millage money is a community center that could have these things, like a volleyball part, a volleyball court, basketball courts, pickleball. And then also, different classes. And I know, Kate, you've mentioned that it'll also be some art classes for all ages and things like that. And I do hope that that continues to be more than just sports. Like, I looked at the Chicago Parks District. They always put on really good programming for all ages. But for kids this summer and maybe beyond, they have, like, nature, health and wellness, educational components. They really run the gamut for their recreation program. So it is beyond sports, which I think is more inclusive for a lot of the kids. So I just, I have hesitations about it being under the school.
And I know that Scott Reiner has talked about having a community center.
That would be awesome.
And Kate, the program you mentioned from the 80s, I, I heard of it when I got here, that it was, there was cooking classes, and there was art classes, and there was music classes.
Yes.
Ran out of the high school. Yeah.
Yeah, it was actually brought out of their adult education department. And there was funding that came from the state. Also, there was funding that was contributed by the city as well as, as the township. And as we all kind of know, in the late 80s and early 90s, we, we had an exodus of a number of industries. And that really imperiled the ability to continue that program going forward, especially when the state dropped its funding for that. So we're trying to reinstitute something that was in this community for some time, knowing that there's multiple partners that made that work. And so we're trying to get a leg up and start this again, knowing that there's different things that have to be brought forward. This is like a first attempt.
Mary?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing I did was go back and look at the millage language. And the school is not mentioned anywhere in the millage. The millage does mention that funds may go to SHARA, but as Scott Reiner had to admit, that if City Council does not want funds to go there, because they are our city tax dollars, we are really the ones who control that. In the presentation, it indicates that one-third is for recreational programming. And in a parenthetical, it says possibly through a partnership with the South Haven Public Schools. My concern with this proposal is, it's not a partnership. The school has sole discretion in hiring and day-to-day activities. And the city has no say in what happens. There's no accountability to the City Council. And then we have no accountability to our taxpayers. And that is where I see the biggest hole. You said it's a one-time payment, but actually, it's an annual payment of $90,000 with future period amounts increasing as appropriate and mutually agreed to by the parties to cover wages, benefits, and other recreational expenditures budgeted. And so I, I just, I echo Jack's concerns. And, you know, a program in the 80s, it, it sounds like it was wonderful, but you admit that it had funding elsewhere. I mean, have you talked, I mean, it sounds like there's been a lot of discussions with select people. But has there been anything with regard to the National Park and Recs about national criteria and what to do? Again, I, I am cautious with how much discretion is, with total discretion being given to the school, City Council having no say whatsoever in it. We get reports, and they meet twice a year with the city manager or, or delegate. But there, if the City Council thinks a different route should be taken, the City Council really has no influence or input. And that's where I have a concern.
Any other comments? George.
I, I remember the CREC program. That was really, that was really a good program. I'm in favor of this. I was sad when the CREC program went away. And I think for a, a city our size, this kind of partnership makes sense.
Okay.
Can I have just one more?
Yep.
I, I'm just wondering if we can see an alternative where it would stay in our Parks Department, so then we could choose which one seems the best.
Or, or an alternative where we have input. They come back to, I'm sorry, they come back to City Council with proposed programming.
Actually, we have input through Joe Reiser.
No, this is through the public schools. So we do not.
But he's on SHARA.
But it's solely in the public schools. It, it's not accountable to SHARA. That's what the agreement says.
So does this council want to be in on the interviews for the school system for hiring that person? I mean, what do you, what kind of input are you looking for?
As I said, the agreement gives sole responsibility for directing and managing day-to-day activities of the CRD. And so the City Council has no input. It would be, I think, more appropriate that proposed programs be brought, especially if this is in its infancy and everything's trying to be figured out, that proposed programs be brought back to City Council.
Okay, let's see if there's a motion.
I make a motion that the City Council approve the community recreation director agreement with South Haven Public Schools.
Support.
I move to amend the agreement under to, A, after the first sentence, inserting that, inserting the CRD will present programs for discussion and approval by South Haven City Council.
Okay, so.
You cut me off. Do I have a second?
No, I'm sorry.
Is that in, in addition to the already $90,000 that would be paid? So each individual program would have to come forward with its own budgetary amount?
Well, so that's the thing. I mean, the $90,000 is only covering the salary, correct? And startup fees?
No, that, that's an all-encompassing amount that's going to the school system for equipment, as well as anything else that's needed to get this started for the first year.
Well, then that's not clear from the agreement, because the agreement says. Trying to find it now. Maybe it's just what was in the, it's what was in the staff report. So the staff report's not very clear, because it says the $90,000 includes salary benefits for the position, as well as any equipment and other startup costs for the position. So are you saying the $90,000 is actually for programs also?
Knowing that I don't know everything, and I know that we've talked about, at least with AYSO in particular, who have to own their own equipment to certain standards, and that's one of the reasons why they've been hesitant to do anything with community recreation, because they would have to buy all-new equipment. That was something that we've postulated with the many discussions we had, is that there's equipment costs that are being borne by individual groups that unless they had something else to fall back on, would not be interested in doing a central repository for programming of any type, since they would have to keep their own equipment.
I don't hear a second. So we're moving back to George's motion that was seconded by Jeff. Let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, so for the agreement with South Haven Public Schools, O'Nookie?
No.
Reiser?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
No.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Moving on, to, the City Council will be asked to consider a motion to introduce an ordinance granting a franchise to Michigan Gas Utilities and consenting Michigan Gas Utilities to locate natural gas lines in city rights-of-way. It's set a public hearing to occur April 21st, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at City Hall. Kate.
Thanks. We were approached by Michigan Gas Utilities with that our franchise had run out and that they are looking to have a new ordinance establishing a franchise for operating in the rights-of-way. This new franchise agreement would be at rather a 15-year term, instead of a 10-year term, and would automatically renew for a 15, 15-year term. Reviewed this with the city attorney and with DPW. No other concerns were brought forward. This is the final form that the city attorney reviewed and has been reviewed by Michigan Gas Utilities.
Any questions? Is there a motion? Or do you have questions?
I make a motion to introduce an ordinance granting a franchise to Michigan Gas Utilities and consenting Michigan Gas Utilities to locate natural gas lines in the city right-of-ways and set a public hearing to occur April 21st, 2025, at 7:00 p.m.
Support.
Second it.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, the City Council will be asked to advise on next steps for the selection of the law firm to perform prosecution services for the City of South Haven. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. We've released an RFP, our current city attorney that handles prosecution services, who has been doing so for many, many years, has indicated a desire to step down. We've released an RFP for prosecuting attorney services on February 22nd. We received only two submissions that were timely received, one from Bloom Sluggett, which is our current city attorney of record, as well as Bachmann Thaw. And City Council obviously has the responsibility to select the firm or the attorney that will be handling prosecuting services. So staff is looking for direction as for next steps.
Okay. Any discussion? Joe?
Yeah, I recommend the second of the two, because Bloom Sluggett, in my humble opinion, because Bloom Sluggett, in my humble opinion, has not represented the city council and what it initially wanted on short-term rentals. Not only that, we started with one partner, then we switched to a second partner, and then at the 11th hour, they gave us a non-partner who really wasn't even familiar with some of the pieces of short-term rental that already had been agreed to. And it set us back. And I just don't think they really represented all the requests of city council. And I think, secondly, I think Buckman Thaw is a second representation within the city's legal departments. That would be good. I don't want to put it all under one roof.
Go ahead.
I would recommend Bloom Sluggett for our prosecuting attorney. While I recognize what you're suggesting, that we've had inconsistent service from them, I would say that's just a reflection of the inconsistent messages that we've sent to them. I also am not thrilled with the second company because they've been involved in litigation against the city. Bloom Sluggett doesn't, doesn't take up those kind of private cases. They are simply municipal representation. And so, and furthermore, we have a relationship with them. They know us, and they know what we want for short-term rentals. And so they're going to know best how to enforce, if it's short-term rentals, they're going to know best how to enforce those codes that we've asked them to write. So that's why I would support Bloom Sluggett.
Which, which one was the low bid? It was Bloom Sluggett, right?
Yes, they have a small, they have a, I guess, cheaper dollar per hour than Buckman Thaw.
It's 220 versus 200. I like the fact that Buckman Thaw has experience in Van Buren County. Some of their clients covert, Village of Papa. And knowing the judges and what the judges want is significant. And so I would support Councilman Reiser's recommendation. What we may want to do is have them come in for interviews like we had done for the, like you had done for the general council in 2023.
Do you have a relationship, are you friends with Catherine Kaufman?
I know her through a A U W.
George?
I'm also looking at, would prefer Bloom Sluggett based on Jeff had all the same comments I had. And I personally don't see the need to do interviews. I think we can decide that just based on what we saw in the request for proposals.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I thought.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought Councilman Reiser did make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we choose Buckman Thaw as our prosecuting attorney.
A second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, different page, okay. Reiser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
No.
Arnold?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
And Brown?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. Next, the city council will be asked to review the report for strategic plan priority setting workshop and consider selecting three priorities for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a priority-setting strategic plan process that we undertook on March 19 with Al Vandenberg. And attached to the city council packet is the report that came out of that, in addition to the updated SWOTs analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, threats, and opportunities. I did not have any voting from Letitia or Joe, but as I've mentioned to a number of you, you can all decide your priorities off of this list. If you'd like to add them, we can all vote on them. I would caution council, we've had some pretty heavy hitting priorities. And I would say please limit them to three because there's things that will occur no matter if council sets it as a priority. But they're definitely, we want to put some dollars behind what council's looking for, and we need to allocate that in the budget.
Okay, is it okay if we just go down the line and each person says what their top three are? Would that be helpful?
I think so, but at the end of the day, we're going to want at least some kind of a motion, kind of allocating, you know, maybe what those three priorities are.
Can I just ask a question really quick?
Sure.
Would it be better to wait until Councilwoman Wilkins is available to be here? Or at least give her input? I just worry about not having her, her voice in this.
We can wait, I can, we can wait. But I just, I want to caution you that we like to put money in the budget for what council's looking for. The longer we delay on that, that's just, it just takes longer time to get that incorporated. So if you all want to wait, and you don't know what your priorities are, or if you think that it's going to be something so, so, so different than what she wants to do, then, then I guess council can make that decision.
Did she contact you after the priority-setting meeting?
No, she did let me know at the priority-setting meeting what her, what her priorities were. Housing, economic development were her top.
Okay.
Didn't, did she have a third?
Those are three.
Oh, that's two. She said lifeguard, sorry, at 147.
Okay.
It was in a separate, sorry, so some of the people in the, in the audience are making little noises. That's what was her first text message, was housing and economic development were her top. Then she texted later to add lifeguards. So not trying to hide the ball here, I know I've got some fans in the audience, but it's housing and economic development are her top. And then she wrote lifeguards as well.
Okay.
Because I thought you had mentioned those three at the priority-setting meeting.
Yep, they were in two different text messages.
Okay, Wendy, would you like to start?
I am really happy with the first four that are on the ranking list. So developing Overton, creating a redevelopment plan for vacant property, increasing missing middle housing inventory, and lifeguard program implementation.
Jeff?
Okay, I had development of Overton, updating, development of Overton, supporting CBD building plans and redevelopment. And under infrastructure, I had renewing the road village and fixing existing roads.
Yeah, so Kate said we could go off the list. I would really like to look at housing more generally. And that would require making sure the master plan has the right verbiage and that I know that will be coming up to us and ensuring that the residential character is preserved. Also enforcement of our ordinances and that would encompass rewriting the antiquated noise ordinance and economic development.
How many, wait.
No, so it was, it's housing, but housing is multifaceted. Enforcement and economic development. And that, that is assuming that lifeguards is finalized this year. If it's not finalized this year, then I would readjust.
Okay, George?
So.
Let's stick with three.
All right, housing is the first one. The central business district, which also includes housing. And, and lifeguards, continuing on with that.
Okay, Joe?
My three are number one, housing, which is Overton. Number two, economic development, which is supported CBD and it's support of existing business district. And number three, organizational improvement governance, which is lifeguard. And secondly, more grants.
Okay. Mine are housing, housing on vacant lots and economic development. Do you want us to vote?
It wouldn't be a bad idea to vote. I think I missed Jeff, I think I had roads, Overton, and what was your other one?
I just wrote it down, too. Economic development, supporting CBD plans and redevelopment.
And then Wendy, I think I got yours as being, I think the top ones in housing, is that right? Develop Overton, create, housing for missing middle. Was there something else I missed on there?
Just the lifeguard is the third one. I was kind of going off the top list, the rankings.
The, not the ones that are in the category rankings, just the ones from the, the second sheet?
But I feel like the, the housing, the vacant property and the missing middle, middle housing are kind of similar, so those would be combined for me. Yep, that would be three.
So for all six, I have housing as one. And there's a variety of different slices on that. I've got economic development by four of them. And then I've got lifeguards on one, two. Two, and Mary, I think you had, you had four. You had housing, economic development, enforcement, and lifeguards.
Yeah, so you know what? Enforcement really is couched under housing. So I'll remove enforcement, and that should go under housing. And so then the third is lifeguard. So housing, economic development, and lifeguards.
And Kate? My third was organization improvement governance, because that was the big heading. But under it, I had lifeguard program and grants. So you can just call my number three, lifeguard program.
So if I've got these written down, I've got housing as a wide, wide category, then two economic development, and then three lifeguards. Is that correct?
Yep. Okay, is there a motion to make those our priorities?
Just a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Does the economic development include development of the central business district?
We can.
Well, that's the problem. We have to figure out what would fall under each of the top votes.
Well.
Okay, let's.
If, if I may, you can say a wide variety of economic development. Otherwise, you're looking at only certain areas of economic development. Are you only looking at in your industrial parks or not?
I mean, it's a chicken and the egg type situation. So economic development is intimately tied with housing and jobs. And jobs can be anywhere. They don't have to necessarily be in industrial.
No, I think that's why we're looking at in a broader perspective, which would include developing businesses and vacant storefronts and vacant land in the central business district.
Can I just ask a question? If we approve these as our three top priorities, I thought the idea was to be more specific about what we want to see, which I know we kind of then broke that out in this list. So we would have the three general priorities that were stated. But then would we be discussing further actions at some point? Or are these kind of your roadmap for what we want to do?
So this is what I was thinking of, was getting these major, three major topics, and then bringing that back like we've done previously. Like, these are some action items that we would see.
That's good.
Knowing that these are pretty broad topics, and there's a lot of things that can be done. Trying to also, one, build in flexibility, but also trying to, you know, further the goal down the road.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
So what are the top three that you've got?
Housing, economic development, lifeguards.
Okay.
I'll move for our city council to adopt the following three priorities for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Housing, economic development, and lifeguards.
Support.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose?
Oh, yes.
The motion passes? Thank you, Wendy. Okay, next. Are we at public comment now?
Yep, for items not on the agenda.
Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have up to five minutes. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Nice to see you all. My name is Kurt Bitman, and I reside at 201 Brockway. It is the house that I was born, raised in, and currently live in for 67 years. I am, as a result, very passionate about my neighborhood and also about my city. But I also want to know, let you know that I'm a block away from the rezoning of 241 Oak, from an R1B to an RM1. And I am in complete opposition to this. I think that it is a spot zoning in a way that will leave an indelible mark on the neighborhood as it is. And that's taking into consideration that there have been changes for Maritime Museum, where there's parking problems there. There has been events that have taken place in Stanley Johnson Park, which also seem, or tend to park all the way down to Brockway where I live. The Fourth of July is a zoo. We don't need a zoo, but we have a zoo. So, and when you take into consideration also short-term rentals, the amount of traffic for the infrastructure has increased incrementally to the point where there's a joke in my neighborhood that when we have the Fourth of July, everybody leaves the area and goes to Chicago where the infrastructure can support it. With that being, with that being said, the point about this is, is that the appropriateness of this menu, of this application for this change is completely unacceptable and inextricably, undeniably, a mark and a way in which I think will forever change the neighborhood. And in going back historically, I'm looking at since 1987, when Morris Horwitz applied, who I happen to have known and grew up with, that there have been several council meetings. There have been several zoning meetings. And all of them have categorically been denied and turned down. And I am an approval of that. So with that being said, this is, I understand, a city planning issue. But it is not a decision that will be made lightly since the person or the applicant will make a decision. They'll institute whatever they want, and then they will leave the area. And we'll be left to look at how we're going to cover the costs of, how much my taxes will go up? How are we going to deal with a dead-end one-way street that goes from a U of Oak to Brockway and back? There, and then, how are we going to rectify that once that happens? When we see what finally, when everything blows out and we can see what goes on, how are we going to rectify that? And I have some concerns about that. The, the concerns, and I'm very passionate about it. So passionate about it that I'm in touch with a law firm for consultation regarding this very issue. I'm very serious about this, and so are the neighbors that are around me. The problems that I see that are included here are multifarious. The displacement of residents, the change of the social fabric of the community, and the reduction in housing options. That is certainly one thing to consider. And you're, it would be the same thing as if I said to you, I would like to have a Ferris wheel on the corner of Phoenix and Broadway. And let the cars go where they may. Would you like that, or would you like that in even next to your next backyard?
Give one minute.
Thank you. Or, or how, how would you want to deal with that when something is proposed on you in such a way? I would have to live with that. And so with that, I just wanted to spend this time to bring about my concern. It is something that I plan on going to the planning meeting with, the zoning commission with. But I wanted to bring it here because of my passion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we are moving on to city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This is.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of year that we're changing seasons. We've had a number of things that are going on. Already, the golf carts are back on the streets, and the end of overnight parking has been finalized for about a month. But in about two weeks, we'll be opening the city marinas, as well as the city's boat launch. And then another month after that, city beach parking will start, and then as well as all the other services that go on there. As a reminder, we utilize two beach vendors to not only provide vending concession services on the city's beaches, but they also give a very big benefit to the city in the fact that they take care of those bathrooms that are well-used throughout the summer. Of course, we purchase all the cleaning supplies and the toilet paper, but we get an incredible benefit from both of those concession areas maintaining those two facilities for us. So, my comments are that we're just kind of rolling through the changing of the seasons. We have a number of things that are going on with, we have three different providers that are looking for Metro Act approval. So, we are anticipating a busy construction season coming forward to the city. Of course, we'll try to work all that out with DPW and try to minimize the disruptions. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any questions?
Kate, I've seen a lot online about the dead birds along the beach, and I know, I believe workers have taken them off the private, the public beaches.
That's correct.
With the second homeowners who are not home. Do you have any information from the DNR and concerns and removal suggestions?
I don't have any update from the DNR, but I'd be honest with you, the government really has to have approval to be entering into people's property. So, I'm not in a position to say that we're going to go pick up everybody's dead birds on private property, since that's very much a private property versus, you know, public entity. So, I don't have any, any guidance on that just now. I would just be very cautious about voluntarily entering onto people's private property, even though well-intentioned, without some kind of, without some kind of either approval and/or direct order from the DNR.
Yep. And so, they haven't gotten back to you to give you any update on test results?
I've got an update that, that some of the birds were non, did not test the first round, and they've been forwarded on to another lab.
I thought she said, so I had talked to the DNR, and I thought they said that it was non-negative.
I don't have the exact verbiage in front of me, Mary, but we have had some, one of the DPW staff did share an email that they had had, that the birds, some of the birds needed to go on to a separate testing facility to get more accurate results.
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions? Wendy?
Since we had someone here earlier representing the Locker family, and I was discussing a couple of weeks ago about the Hales development with city staff, and was just wondering if we could get an update on the Hales development sometime.
We can see, we can find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Councilperson's comments. George?
I'm glad Dana Bird is here, because I, I got notified as a member of the Department of Public Works that, or not, the Board of Public Utilities, that the city of Southaven was recognized by the American Public Power Association with a certificate of excellence in reliability. And Southaven is only one of, is one of 12 communities in Michigan, and one of 255 nationally that attain this award. And the utility has to be in the top quartile from 2019 to 2023 in reliability in order to get this award. So, good job. That's it.
Thank you. Joe?
As it pertains to lifeguards, first, I want to thank city staff for picking US LA as a guidance, for putting this program together. And I'm really optimistic that we're finally moving forward. I think we just have to put our pencil to the cost and the revenue, but I'm optimistic, and I think this is the best thing for the community, as well as all the tourists. Second thing, I really dislike voting against the rec director position, because I am completely supportive of recreation in this community. I just think it has to, we have to go back and re-look at this and come up with a better way of getting a director with qualifications and the cost, just have more information so we can make a better decision. And I wasn't prepared with what we have to do that. Thanks.
Mary?
Yes. So, there's a lot happening at Planning Commission on Thursday. Unfortunately, I have a family obligation and cannot attend, but there is, the STR ordinance is having a public hearing that would then be coming to us. The package has a few different options, and hopefully, there's a good discussion about that. I thank city manager Hoser for providing my draft review, so everyone can see my comments with me not being able to be there. The rezoning of the Victoria Inn is on the agenda, and I hope that there's a good discussion about that. I have no doubt there will be. And the master plan, the next steps, will be on the agenda. So, with the city council having reserved the right for final approval, that will be coming to us. It's my understanding, and Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that until this, it would come to city council, and then we would accept or amend, suggest changes, and it would go back to the Planning Commission until we get a version that we find acceptable. And the reason I say that is, I think that some of the master plan could be, the tax, the narrative could be softened to allow missing middle in some of the residential areas. Right now, it's really single-family for them. I think several of us would not mind a duplex, triplex, having the smaller number of units that would blend right in. That's what it's all about, missing middle. And this is where we put the footing down, is in the master plan. And unfortunately, it's couched in mixed use. And I'm concerned that that sends the wrong message of what we want in residential. You know, it's where the residential districts are being recommended for rezoning to mixed use. And I think that's changing the residential character of those neighborhoods, especially the south end of Ward 1. And I really hope that the Planning Commission takes this into account. I think other people have talked to them about that, sent in communications. And so, I hope that that will be taken into account. It's my understanding that that change will not happen to remove the mixed use unless the Planning Commission requests it to be removed, or city council sends it back to Planning Commission to remove. And with lateness, I will just end there.
Wendy?
I guess first I want to say that I'm disappointed where we ended up with lifeguards, but I am hopeful that we can get answers to these final questions and bring it back and still get, if approved by city council, lifeguards on our beaches sometime this summer. And then, one thing that I feel like we've talked about in the past, but with the summer coming up, I would propose or ask that we could talk about a potential ban on balloon releases and the lit lanterns for our city. So, I don't know what council's opinion is about that, but it's a lot of litter that goes in our waterways and also can catch houses and forests on fire, so.
And I would support that, and it's not just litter, it's death.
Right.
Waterfowl die out.
Anything else, Wendy?
Nope, that is it. Thanks.
Jeff?
No comment.
I just want to thank our city staff for cleaning up the dead birds so quickly. And I was really impressed and grateful for Matt Day's work. He was very prompt on writing a press release, and the press release was so good that it was used by Southaven Township. So, when I saw that, I was like, wow, that's great. So, and I'm also excited that city council approved the vending machine services provided by Demonte Hudson. Do you remember him?
Sure.
So, at Black River Park. He's a graduate of Southaven High School and is now studying business and finance at Western Michigan University. So, I'm looking forward to buying my treats there. So, that's all. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.